Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Oceanside City Council Meeting Special Meeting, December 14, 2022. And this is a special meeting to bring forward on you council members and have an opportunity to also thank the outgoing council members. Let's have a roll call.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
And I don't see Councilmember Rodriguez here.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise? We have Kalen Hamer of the Oceanside High School Choir, who will be singing our national anthem.
Hi, everybody. I'm with Oceanside High School Choir. I'm the president for our show choir. Thank you so much for having me. We're having a Christmas show tomorrow night. If you'd like to join us, just put that up there. Okay. Promo over. Okay. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And actually, we also have an invocation. The name didn't make it, Zeb, on the notice? We did not have a name on the notice?
invocation, no, I don't think we do.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Well, we have one item on the agenda, and that is item number one, which is city council adoption of a resolution certifying the results of the city's general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 8, 2022. And we have a report by Zeb Navarro, our city clerk.
So before you tonight is the adoption of a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election of the November 8, 2022, and swearing in of the new city-elected officials. In accordance with California Elections Code, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution declaring the results of the city's general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 8 of this year, and swear in the newly elected officials. Based on the results the register of voters has provided, the following candidates were elected. For the seat of member of the city council, District 1, candidate Eric Joyce received 4,780 votes and is declared the winner of Member of the City Council, District 1. For the seat of Member of the City Council, District 2, Richard Robinson received 6,316 votes and is declared the winner of Member of the City Council, District 2. Staff recommends that the city council, in accordance with California Elections Code Sections 10262 through 10265, recommends that the city council adopt a resolution declaring the results of the city's general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 8 of this year, and swear in the newly elected officials. And that concludes my report. And just real briefly, just want to thank the other candidates that did run. Corey Jensen, David Turgeon, Alvin McGee, Darren Selnick, and Daniel Dominguez, who ran for District 2. It takes a lot of guts to put yourself out there, so I just really wanted to acknowledge those candidates. And round of applause for those candidates.
Thank you. Are there any requests to speak from the public on this item?
There are no requests to speak on this item.
And so, did anybody want to speak on this item? No, I guess we're all here to watch the swearing in. So what I suggest that we do is that we first thank the council members, the outgoing council members. Well, actually, we have to vote on this first with the current council. And then after that, we will let a council member, Corey Jensen, speak, right? And then, and I guess Chris, no one's here for Councilmember Christopher Rodriguez. But is there a motion? There's a motion?
A second.
And there's a second. Please vote.
Motion approved for a.
So we are going to have, as the council members get sworn in, they will be joining us here on the dais. So before that happens, I'd like to give an opportunity for Councilmember Corey Jensen to say a few words. She did serve about two years, and so she joined us on the council because of the vacancy that occurred when I was elected mayor. So Councilmember Jensen, give you the floor.
I just wanted to take this time to thank everybody at the city and all my supporters and everybody that has helped me in the last two years here. It's been a great experience. I've learned a lot, a lot, a lot. And I'm very proud of the two new council members that are coming in. I'm sure they're going to do an excellent job. So thank you.
We'd like to present to you a certificate of appreciation.
All right. We do actually have two extra seats, well, three. So instead of saying, hey, get off the dais, we'll wait till the very end of the meeting. Thank you so much for your service, Councilmember Jensen. And thank you to Councilmember Rodriguez for his service as well. So we are going to move on to our swearing in. We'll start with District 1, Eric Joyce.
And if you have any more family members or friends that want to join you?
I don't know if there's enough room for everybody.
All right, Eric. You can raise your right hand if you want. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eric Joyce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
So for the first time, introducing District 1 Councilmember Eric Joyce.
Eric, you get the mic?
When you sit down.
Oh, when you sit down. Okay, got it.
So our next elected official we will be swearing in is Richard Robinson, and he is going to be sworn in by Oceanside Fire Chief Dave Parsons.
Okay. Raise your right hand.
I.
I.
State your name.
Richard Robinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
So for the first time, introducing District 1 Councilmember Eric Joyce.
Eric, I'd like you to join me here, join us on the dais.
And Eric, we do have a certificate of election for you as well. So congratulations. And also, Rick, we also have a certificate of election for you as well.
I'm sure we'll be getting a ton of pictures after this very short meeting. I do want to say thank you so much. We've got a lot of staff members here from the city of Oceanside, city manager, assistant city manager, our police chief, fire chief, of course, and all the departments. We also have some members of the Oceanside Unified School District. We have Eleanor Evans, trustee, and also Raquel Alvarez, trustee, as well as Julie Vitale, our superintendent, who basically shows the closeness that we share, the relationship that we share in working together for the good of the city of Oceanside. So thank you very much for being here. We also have a former city manager, Steve Jepson, here. We also have NAACP Chair Satia Austin here. We have members of the Chamber of Commerce, members of Main Street, and members of Visit Oceanside. Thank you all for being here. So at this time, I'm going to hand over the mic to our new council members, starting with District 1 Councilmember Eric Joyce.
All the ins and outs to learn. I want to start, first of all, by ceding a moment of my time to Pastor Sheldon, who came here to provide the invocation. So if we could all give him a few minutes to give comments from District 1.
Thank you so much.
Let's all rise, please. And my apologies, Pastor Sheldon, for not calling you out at the beginning of the.
It's all good. Father God, we come before you this day, giving honor and praise to you, and thank you, dear Lord, for these two new council members. Lord, the duties they have set before them are much too large for them to carry out. But when they lean on you and call upon you, it shall come to pass. We thank you, Father God, for this city of Oceanside, that so many people have invested into, and they want to see what you have in store for this city, not just what we have in store. We pray a blessing upon the city, council members, the mayor, and everyone else. And Lord, may we, as the people of the city of Oceanside, may we join together to bring about a great solution to all the issues that are at hand, that your name will be glorified through all of it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Sheldon.
I promised to be brief. I had to write it down, though, so I wouldn't forget everything. First and foremost, I want to thank my family, who are always standing with me in the best way, calling me in in every moment to make sure that I'm a better human each and every day. I am who I am because of who you are. My life partner, Rachel, who carries so much when I am serving either with the school district or now with the city. I can't say how thankful I am to have a partner like you. Thank you to my children, who are graceful and understanding when I have to miss a game or not be the one to pick them up, or if they have to sit in chambers and read a book in their afternoon, when I'm sure they'd rather be playing soccer with their friends. To my Oceanside Unified family, Dr. Begin's here, too. It has been an incredible journey with you and the work that we did in the school district that I know you will carry on. It's something that we, as a city, need, and so I thank you for your service. I want to thank all the candidates that were in the race, and it's so hard, as our city clerk just mentioned, to put yourself out there and to take all of what comes when you run for office. So thank you to everyone who ran. Thank you, Corey, for running, and thank you for your years of service. Thank you to all the good troublemakers and all the community advocates. I know there's a lot of you in here. I want to see you still coming around. I know I will. I also want to thank my team of volunteers who worked on this campaign because they, too, believed in the service that would come after. We stayed true to our values and were targeted to build consensus around what the future of Oceanside could be. We have done this together, and it will take all of us and more working together to turn a campaign that is a win into actual benefit for the community. Oceanside's a family, and like every family, we have some conflict from time to time. But we are bound by love, by shared fate. We have tough decisions in the years ahead. Will we succumb to the story we've seen play out in other cities, where they become the new trendy place and the people who build the city and make it eclectic and diverse and beautiful be pushed out? Or can we plot a deliberate course, one that balances our economic growth with our people's well-being, that balances our safety with our compassion for others, that balances our economics with our need for community? I believe we can do these things. I believe that our family can grow closer with good conversation and grace. I look forward to doing this work with you, for you. Thank you for being here, and this is truly an honor of a lifetime. Thank you.
Before we go to District 2, I did see former Mayor Terry Johnson here, also Chris Duncan from San Clemente. Are you the mayor now?
Yes.
Mayor Chris Duncan is also here. And we also have commissioners from our different boards and commissions. Thank you so much for being here, too. I know how much you care about the city of Oceanside. Fernando Hernandez, I don't think he's here in his official capacity today, but thank you so much, Fernando, for being here and in every kind of meeting that we've had. I know how much you care about the city of Oceanside. So District 2, our new city council member.
Thank you, Mayor.
Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. The view's a lot different from here than I was going to tell you. Thank you very much. And when I wrote this, I tried to stay to the three-minute civilian time, so, Zeb, you can time me if you want.
You could have had up to 10.
Well, never mind. I've seen what happens when you do that. I do want to thank our outgoing council members personally for their service to the city. Thank you. And there's a gentleman in the audience that I have not had a chance to talk to, and that was my, or is my challenger in District 2, Daniel Dominguez, and he's here. And I just want to thank you, Daniel, for running a campaign based on the issues, and I appreciate you very much. I'd like to start by thanking Chief Parsons for issuing the oath to me today. It's very symbolic, if you know, that I retired as the fire chief here in the city, and to have Dave do that for me meant a lot. Thank you. And I thank all in attendance today. Taking the oath of office is a required and important first action of a government official. In the past 45 years, I've raised my hand and taken the oath of office as a sailor in the Navy, as a firefighter, a paramedic, as an inspector, when I became an arson investigator, as a chief officer, and as the fire chief here in the city of Oceanside. Today, I take this oath in a capacity different than all of those that I just mentioned. Because a majority of the electorate put their trust in me, today I take this oath, not because of something I achieved, but rather because of what you have done through the ballot box. For your support, I am forever grateful. The oath taken today is not done so only in support of those who voted for me. The oath and the promises within are taken on behalf of all. To the best of my ability, I promise to serve all who reside, work, and visit our city. I'm often asked what I'm excited about as I take office. At the top of the list is that I will once again get to serve with the dedicated management and staff who keep the city of Oceanside running. Oceanside is blessed to have so many dedicated public servants. I look forward to reconnecting with you and, in whatever way I can, support your efforts in making a difference for others. I'm excited to work collaboratively with our mayor and fellow council members in order to find solutions to some of our most difficult challenges: improving public safety, managing homelessness, keeping our beaches, increasing housing availability, traffic improvement, supporting and expanding our business community, improving our recreational facilities, maintaining and improving our infrastructure. All of those will require a shared sense of purpose, sound policy development, wisdom in our decision-making, and the best efforts of city staff. In closing, I want to thank my wife Cheryl and my family and friends for their continued support. I also want to thank all those who advised me and supported my campaign efforts. There are too many to name, and I would risk missing someone if I tried. Many of you are here today, and I hope you know how much I value your friendship, and I will seek your continued guidance in the years ahead. And finally, to all Osiders, in whatever manner you celebrate as we enter this holiday period, I wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy Kwanzaa. I also pray for us all that 2023 will be a year of prosperity for all of us. So God bless you. God bless Oside. Thank you.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any public comments, off-agenda items?
Yes, we do. We only have one speaker registered, Richard Newton.
Mr. Newton, please approach the podium. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the city council, and the public, I'm here today to welcome the new members to the city council and to thank the outgoing members, Councilmember Corey Jensen and Christopher Rodriguez. And I congratulate and welcome Eric Joyce and Rick Robinson on their election to the city council. I look forward to speaking about issues of concern that me and other residents have in the city of Oceanside at future council meetings, and I thank all the members for listening in the past to the concerns that I had and diligently considering them. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
We have no more speakers.
Before I adjourn the meeting, we do have a convocation for this special meeting. We have Captain Mel Vernon of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. Please rise.
No, let me just share with you, a convocation is a word I haven't come across before. Usually, it's a blessing of a sort in the beginning, so this is, I guess, a little bit of a blessing towards the future, take it for what we, the positiveness coming. So I'm Mel Vernon, the captain of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, and the land we are standing on for more than 10,000 years is the ancestral home of the Lusenyo people. And much like the present time, our ancestors faced many challenges and hardships, but persevered and survived. I am honored to be asked to say a few words. Today, we are starting a new chapter of the Oceanside City Council, looking forward to the promise of a positive future for all the community of Oceanside, remembering the winds and the wisdom that keep our community strong in spirit and purpose, not forgetting the lessons learned from the losses we have experienced, so we do not have to repeat them. Let us keep our minds and hearts open to hear the concerns of all the people who call Oceanside home. Let today be a new beginning of our community coming together and sustaining a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and celebrate our great city of Oceanside. The San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians look forward to continuing our relationship with the city of Oceanside in honor and respect. And I just add that it's a good feeling today that we have coming together in the words of harmony that I've heard, going to a future that sometimes doesn't look too bright, but I know that these challenges we faced before and will keep facing again, and I have trust in the people who are on our council and also the community of Oceanside. Thank you.
We do have a reception outside, courtesy of the city clerk's office. It's.
Light refreshments.
And Jersey Mike sandwiches.
Jersey Mike sandwiches.
And cookies and sweets, because it's a very sweet event and a sweet time of year.
There we go.
See what I did there, Peter?
So, okay, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is December 21, next Wednesday, with the new city council. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.